Okay, I think that we are ready for the council meeting to start.
Mayor, we have Housing Authority beforehand?
Oh, I thought you had done Housing Authority already. It's not done yet? Okay, no problem. Once you get to do that.
Do we have quorum?
Yes, we do.
Wonderful. I'd like to call the Housing Authority to order, please, if we could have roll call.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilwoman Price? Councilwoman Supranaw?
Here.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Here.
Councilmember Yoranga? Councilman Austin? Vice Mayor Richardson? Commissioner Tanser? She indicated she's here. Vice Chair Sorrow?
Present.
Chair Zandehas?
Present, thank you. And if we could please read item number one?
Recommendation to approve the minutes of the Housing Authority of the City of Long Beach, California, regular meeting held Tuesday, May 11th, 2021.
May I please have a motion?
A move, Richardson.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second, Al.
Thank you. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk?
Yes. Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Price? Councilwoman Supranaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yoranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sorrow?
Aye.
Chair Zandehas?
Aye.
Commissioner Tanser?
Here.
Commissioner Hudson? Motion carries.
Thank you. May you please read item number two?
Recommendation to receive and file the Housing Authority Financial and Operation Performance Report for March 2021.
Thank you. If I could please have a motion?
Move Richardson.
Thank you. A second, please?
Second, Yoranga.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Price? Councilwoman Supranaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Aye.
Councilmember Yoranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sorrow?
Aye.
Chair Zandehas?
Aye.
Commissioner Tanser?
I see, aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I don't know if this is too late, but I think I overheard someone that thinks there may have been comments that...
We had no public comments for this meeting.
Okay, thanks. This is the deputy city attorney. I just wanted to make sure that that was made clear that there is no public comment. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Thank you. That concludes our Housing Authority meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order of the Long Beach City Council. So I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, can you give us a few minutes while we transition to the City Council?
Sure thing.
Councilwoman Zandehas?
President.
Councilwoman Allen?
Present.
Councilwoman Price? Councilwoman Supranaw?
Here.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Present.
Councilmember Yoranga?
Present.
Councilman Austin?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Present.
And Mayor Garcia. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to do a moment of silence and a pledge led by Councilwoman Mary Zandehas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this moment, I would like to request a moment of silence for, first of all, for all those we have lost in the past couple of months and year, actually. Not only to COVID, but to many other illnesses, and a special moment of silence for all the businesses that we have lost due to COVID and all of the businesses that have not been able to survive and that hopefully we can help all of the other businesses that are here survive. So with that, if you could all join me in a moment of silence for them. Thank you. At this moment, if you could also join me for the pledge of allegiance, for those of you that can, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. I would like to get a motion, please, for the consent calendar. If I can please get a motion and a second for the consent calendar. I have a motion by Councilmember Austin. Can I get a second, please? Second by Councilwoman Sorrow. There is no public comment. Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Zandehas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Price? Councilwoman Supranaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Yoranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to do, I'm going to first get through some of these other items a little quicker. Items 10, 11, 16, 17, and 18 are all funds transfer items. So we've been doing those as groups. So Madam Clerk, can you read items 10, 11, 16, 17, and 18?
Item 10 is a communication from Councilman Austin, Councilmember Yoranga. Recommendation to increase appropriation in the City Manager's Department by $7,500 to provide a donation to Care Closet LBC to support their ongoing operation to assist and provide opportunities for people experiencing homelessness. Item 11 is a communication from Councilwoman Price. Recommendation to increase appropriation in the City Manager's Department by $250 to provide a contribution to Long Beach Unified School District to support the literal Wilson High School Senior Celebration 2021. Item 16 is a communication from Vice Mayor Richardson, Councilwoman Zandehas, Councilmember Yoranga. Recommendation to increase appropriation in the City Manager's Department by $50,000 to support the Uptown Jazz Festival. And item 17 is a communication from Councilwoman Sorrow, Councilwoman Zandehas. Recommendation to increase appropriation in the City Manager's Department by $5,000 to provide a contribution to City Fabric for District 6 Dialogue. Item 18 is a communication from Councilwoman Sorrow, Vice Mayor Richardson. Recommendation to increase appropriation in the City Manager's Department by $1,000 to provide a donation to Love Beyond Limits for the 2021 Juneteenth Celebration at MLK Junior Park.
Thank you very much. I think we got all of the items. So let me, I have a motion by Councilmember Austin and I have a second by Vice Mayor Richardson. Councilmember Austin?
Oh, yes. Well, I could speak on the item that I brought forward. Obviously, it is a appropriation of $5,000 to Care Closet. They've been honored before the City Council, continue to do great works with unhoused population, doing cleanups throughout North Long Beach, my district, as well as other areas of the city. And I think it's a good use of public funds at this point, would ask for your support and thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to second this and be in support of all of these transfers that I have here as in support of our annual Uptown Jazz Festival, which is a citywide, a citywide great opportunity for people to come together, sort of a citywide event in Uptown Long Beach. We're really proud of it. I want to thank Councilman Roberto Yoranga for co-sponsoring it, this year with me, as well as Councilmember Mary Zandehas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Zandehas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make a friendly amendment to item 16, and that is that we will be contributing $5,000 to the Jazz Festival, please, if you accept that friendly, Vice Mayor.
Absolutely. If the mayor of the motion should accept it as well.
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Yeah, I just want to build upon last week's item around making Juneteenth a city and federal and state holiday, and where it's so great that there'll be a variety of Juneteenth celebration and just happy to share that I'll be supporting the annual Juneteenth celebration at MLK Park. That'll be hosted by Love Beyond Limits, as well as other six district resident and organizations and churches as well. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we do have some public comment, and then we'll go to a vote. We have public comment, I think, on 18 of those items. On number 18 of those.
Our first speaker is Malika Chris.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, please begin.
Okay, my name is Malika Chris. I'm in support of Councilwoman Dr. Suri Sorrow's Agenda Item 18. A recommendation to provide a donation to Love Beyond Limits for the 2021 Juneteenth Celebration at Martin Luther King Park in partnership with Cultural Alliance of Long Beach. Love Beyond Limits has empowered youth and helped to transform life for many years now, and we believe it is important for our youth and community of Long Beach to celebrate such an important holiday in the African-American culture. Long Beach has a rich and deep history where African-American community and this event will allow us to come together to celebrate after such an isolated year due to COVID-19. I asked the Council to support Agenda Item 18 so that we can continue to pass on the teaching of those before us and continue to push for a better future. Thank you, guys, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment for this item.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Zandehas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Supranaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Yoranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, let's do, let's have kind of quick votes on the, on, well, actually, they may not be quick. We actually have some public comments. We have, we have three votes on ordinances that are, I believe, second readings or first readings that were already adopted by the council. Items 13, 14, and 15, so let's take a vote on each of those individually. Item 13.
Item 13 is Communication from City Attorney Recommendation to Declare Ordnance Adding Long Beach Municipal Codes Chapter 8.81 Relating to Fireworks and Declaring the Urgency thereof. Read the first time and lay it over to the next regular meeting, CDY.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve. What's your public comment, please?
Felipe Herrera? Felipe Herrera, please unmute for item 13.
Hi. Hi. I live in District 4, and I'm just here to make a request of city officials to give a little bit more attention to our district due to the constant fireworks that have been going off nearly every night. I realize there have been many city attempts to correct this in the past, but I feel it's important to to dedicate an earnest effort to to make this a little better for everybody. So this is just an honest plea, and I don't have any, any suggestions as I'm I don't have much knowledge of how to fix this issue. I'm just kind of hoping my, my request is heard. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment for this item.
Okay, members, please go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, can we have the mover and seconder, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Councilwoman Yoranga and Councilwoman Mungo.
And I queued, sir.
Oh, sorry. Just in motion. So I just thought you were just making the motion. So Councilwoman Yoranga, do you have any comments?
No comments, I'll refer to the CD5.
Councilwoman Mungo?
This is item 13. Was there a staff presentation?
Mayor, members of the council, this is City Attorney Park, and this is this is not a second, this is not one of the second readings. The other three ordinances were second reading.
Right.
And yes, we do. Art Sanchez from my office can give a summary of the ordinance. Linda Tatum can certainly discuss the fireworks committee, and we have the city prosecutor Doug Howard available and the deputy police chief. Art?
Because I have a few questions, but they might be answered by the presentation, up to Mr. Mayor, how he'd like me to proceed.
No, I was under the impression that there weren't questions here, so that there was just an ordinance coming back. So we can go ahead. If, City Attorney, do you want to kind of give a summary of the ordinance?
Art Sanchez?
Yes. Counsel, Mr. Mayor. This item came to our, well, this item was brought to our attention by the fireworks committee. Our office was directed to prepare an ordinance to increase enforcement measures for the use of illegal fireworks. The focus of this, the language of this ordinance was to address those issues. One being increasing the scope of individuals that could be held responsible for violations, as well as to increase the penalties. One aspect of the increasing the scope of responsibility or the scope of people that could be held accountable for illegal fireworks was to create a host liability ordinance, which would include property owners, tenants, landlords, property managers, as well as any individual that organizes, supervises, officiates, or conducts any type of firework event at a particular private location. The second main point in the language of the ordinance is the response costs. So anyone that is found to be held in violation of the language of the ordinance would be responsible for the cost, the actual cost of fire, PD, and any kind of emergency personnel responding to a call relating to illegal firework activity. And so those are the two main points of this ordinance. I am available to answer any questions that council may have. I also want to remind council that this is an urgency ordinance so that it will require two separate votes once the councils conclude discussion. And that's the, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Thank you. So I just want to thank the fireworks committee, the city attorney staff, and I know Linda Tatum's been a big part of this. Two questions. I want to make sure you get both questions out because I know we have a limited amount of time. When we talk about all the parties that could be held liable, I think it's important for there to be a process or a way where we ensure that the individual putting off the fireworks is actually the one that is held accountable. And so I know that there are situations where there are minors involved. I know there are situations where there are tenant landlord issues, property manager issues. So I guess I would want to know what are our methods of ensuring that the process, if a landlord or a property manager appropriately notices the tenants of the legal requirements not to use fireworks inappropriately, then it sounds like as a component of the the ordinance, the landlord could still be held liable, or is it that in that case, if proper noticing went through, it would be the tenant? And then what kind of costs are we talking about? What is our estimate of what we're talking about? Where our current fine is $1,000? I don't know. A captain bills that how much an hour, how many hours are we talking about to input it? Are we talking about an increase? I would hope so because we came to the the city and said we need these to be more larger penalties, but in cost recovery, it doesn't always turn out that way. We want to make sure that we have an understanding of the magnitude of what we're passing tonight and how that could be held by a landlord who could be a 85-year-old person in a senior community who uses their rent for their fees to take care of themselves in a senior community. So I just want to make sure we know what we're passing here.
Councilwoman, this is Linda Tatum. I can speak to several of the issues you raised there. You, you talked about who is responsible, and that is one of the things that the fireworks, the working group spent a lot of time on looking at this ordinance in terms of the actual implementation of it. And at the heart of this ordinance, the new concept that is introduced here is the notion of what we call host responsibility or social responsibility. And like many other property-related ordinances, the ultimate responsibility is to the property owner. So the way that the ordinance is written, when a a property owner is assumed to know or be aware or be responsible for any activities that a tenant, a visitor, or even someone who is just, as long as they're on their property, they're responsible. they're responsible for those costs, those costs that are associated with the violation. That's the fundamental premise of this ordinance. And we talked among our group about how it would be implemented. It's very much the same way you investigate any other crime is if there is evidence either from a complaint, the police department would go out, they would take a report, they provide the evidence of that information to the city attorney. The city attorney would thereby issue the citation. And we talked about the cost. The citation, state law limits the citation to $1,000, which is why it was necessary to increase that penalty to include the cost recovery. And at this time, we are not addressing the actual cost recovery fee. That is what will come back to you next week. And we hope to, in the staff report when we present that item, to have some approximate costs that we can share with the council. So tonight, you're just approving the ordinance language. Next week, you will consider what those fees are or what those potential fees could be because we're not... You're only adopting the concept of the cost recovery, and that would include not only fire and police, as Art noted, but it would also include the cost of the city attorney to prosecute the fees. And I would like to just take a little bit of time to talk about some of the other activities of that working group. They have been very active in terms of designing an outreach program. The direction that we got from council last July, when fireworks kind of went through the roof, is just to attack this from more than just one perspective. One of those was increasing the penalty, but the other one was to do a much broader outreach and education campaign, and that has started in earnest. The other thing that we've been really active in is collaborating with neighbors. We've been very active in trying to collaborate across the state with other approaches and strategies for how other cities are addressing this. So all of that went into our consideration of proposing this ordinance. Again, we're looking at best practices. Two other things that will be a factor, at least for this Fourth of July, is the fact that the city council last week approved the free block parties. We're still hoping that that will be a deterrent. In addition to those block parties, the other thing that we will continue to do is to start data collection so that we know the number of calls for service, and we can track those over time based upon different activities that we put in place there. So we're trying to look at this from a number of different perspectives to really get a better handle on this and to prioritize the issue in the community based upon the council's direction that we received. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there a toolkit for landlords and property managers for information that they can provide as a notice to their tenants? When we did the suspension of rent, I did hear from a number of senior citizens who said, "You're literally taking away my rent and grocery money because I live on that income." And so I'm very cautious when we pass ordinances like this, that we both want to hold the individual who's terrorizing the community with illegal fireworks accountable. And what we don't want to do is then rack up a fee that we're passing an ordinance today with no fee attached to it. So I mean, it could be anywhere from $1,000 to... I imagine it wouldn't be as high as $10,000, but I just don't know. And the reason that a council came together and said, you know, "We really want the fees to be higher," is because we wanted those fees to fall on the people who are willing to spend thousands of dollars on the illegal fireworks. We didn't want those to land on our elderly residents who are providing housing for the community. And so I just want to make sure that through that social responsibility and host responsibility you discussed, that there's a process where if a landlord and/or property management company could demonstrate that they did their due diligence, that there's still a way to hold the right person accountable for these fireworks and those fees. So that would be my concern. Otherwise, I'm very supportive of the item as long as those are met.
Councilmember, this is City Attorney. The fee is in the ordinance. It's a $1,000 fee. The fees that were referenced by the assistant city manager Linda Tatum will be the cost recovery fees. So they will be in addition to the $1,000 fee that is established this evening in this ordinance, if that helps answer your question.
Yes. I definitely understand that to be the case, but I don't see any cost estimates. And they said they're going to bring those next week, but today we're being asked to approve the structure by which we come up with those cost estimates. So that's all. And Mr. Parkin, are you of the mind that our residents that are not setting off the fireworks, if done proper noticing, would be protected from burdening these fees and fines as the landlord who appropriately goes out and/or hires resources to manage their property to ensure that those tenants aren't terrorizing the neighborhood? What does that process look like?
So the process of the ordinance would be to hold the host or the property owner responsible for this conduct. However, there is an exception that it does not apply to a host who initiates contact with law enforcement or fire officials to assist in removing the person or terminating the activity in order to comply with the chapter. So there is, for those landlords that are working with the city and trying to eliminate this, there is an exception.
And this is Art Sanchez. Just to follow up on Mr. Parkin's comment in regard to how these fees or the enforcement against a property owner would go, they would have an opportunity to respond and provide information similar to what Councilwoman Mungo was referring to in terms of if they provided notice to a tenant or if they provided specific information to whoever was occupying the property that they were not to use illegal fireworks. That certainly can be taken into consideration when we're evaluating whether or not to proceed with the prosecution of the citation.
Wonderful. Thank you. I hope that Linda Tatum can bring back some samples that we can circulate in our newsletters and on social media in multiple languages. Some landlords may have tenants that don't speak the same language as them, and it's really important that language is integrated into all components of our city. And so for those reasons, I would hope that a flyer and/or acknowledgement tool could be provided for property owners and property management companies. I think that'll go a long way in getting those entities to help with our campaign to notify people that illegal fireworks are not going to be tolerated in Long Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmen Zindejas?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, for all of those listening to our city council meeting, one of the things that I want to make very clear is that fireworks are illegal in the city of Long Beach, any kind of fireworks. And we have been having this problem for years now. As was mentioned last week, city councils... Last week's city council meeting, fireworks are not only disturbing but because they set off car alarms and don't let people sleep, but they are also very dangerous and triggering for our vets that, you know, occur or went through violent gun battles and stuff like that. So it brings back a lot of PTSD. Yet despite the $1,000 fine that we already have imposed for fireworks citations in the last couple of years, we have seen an increase in the number of illegal fireworks. One of the things that I would like to see, and like Councilman Mungo said, is I would not want any unintended consequences to hurt our property owners and landlords when they are not aware of the illegal fireworks that are being lit by maybe some of their tenants. I do worry about that. I was wondering, is there a way? I mean, I am sure that there could be a way where if a landlord does not know and does not obviously approve of their tenants doing or lighting up fireworks on their property, that they have the freedom to be able to pass that fee on to them? Is that something that is possible?
So this is City Attorney Art Sanchez. So in answer to that question, one of the main issues relating to enforcement measures of illegal firework activity is finding the violators. So if a property owner is in a better position to identify who these individuals are that are setting off the fireworks, then yes, we would take that into consideration depending on what the information is and how we could identify the individual who set off the fireworks. So that would be something we could take into consideration. But as a whole, regarding the way host liability works in this situation, I think the focus is on being able to enforce against individuals. And what host liability does in the language of this ordinance is increases the scope of people we can hold accountable so that we can get to the actual individuals that are setting off these fireworks or have possession of these fireworks or are selling these fireworks. And, you know, so that's one of the reasons for having this type of language. And, you know, again, those are things that we can address as we, you know, seek to enforce this ordinance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Another thing, for those that are caught lighting up fireworks, I know that other cities such as Pasadena, which has been thrown a lot around when it comes to fireworks. I was wondering, they have an ordinance that impounds the cars that the person lighting the fireworks has. Is that something that we can consider in this ordinance?
So this is Art Sanchez. Again, I have reviewed what the city of Pasadena has in its ordinance, and I didn't see anything in their actual fireworks ordinance relating to the impoundment of a vehicle. I don't know if that's related to someone that is discharging or selling or possessing the fireworks in their vehicle, but it may be that the vehicle is part of, I guess, the committing of the violation or the crime. And that may be a basis why. I just don't have enough information to know what Pasadena is doing in terms of the impoundment of vehicles.
When doing some of my research, I did come across that, and I did believe that it was, you know, for having these illegal fireworks in the car that they were being impounded. But I will look further into it, and maybe we can talk offline. I think...
That's fine.
My second question would be, is it possible to issue like or come up with an incentive program to help residents identify who is lighting up fireworks? And possibly, maybe even when we have the... If we, you know, identify someone that's lighting up fireworks and that's doing this, and then we give them the fee, which is the $1,000 plus, right? Is there a way that we can probably use maybe some of that money from the fee to create an incentive program?
This is the attorney. That could be considered during your budget application process as whatever money that's coming in for the program. The cost and the fees that you'll discuss next week are to recover the cost of the services to implement the program. So if we start giving the money or you return the money, or it sounds like you're creating some sort of incentive or reward program for reporting, that would have to be additional monies that the city would have to make that decision on how much, how you would distribute that, how you would award that, and that could be considered during your budget cycle.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. It gives me a little bit of hope. Third question, and I may be running out of time. Okay. Thank you. I'll queue back up. Thank you.
Councilmember Austin?
Thank you. I just need a little bit more clarity on the host. As you all remember, I brought forth the social hosting ordinance related to alcohol consumption, I want to say, maybe eight years ago. And I think our city prosecutor... I think a lot of this is based on that. The host is not necessarily the owner. I just want to be clear on that. Is that correct, City Attorney?
Yes. Councilman Austin, that is correct.
Okay. So it could be the tenant. It could be a landlord. It could be a property manager. But it's trying to assign responsibility to someone at a specific address. That's how I understand this. And so with that in mind, that may address some of the scenarios related to fireworks in our city, but may not all. And so I just want to ask how we... Or how does this ordinance address potential situations where individuals may be setting off fireworks in an alley or in the middle of the street?
So to answer your question, Councilman, the ordinance does have language that allows for a adjacent property or adjacent public right-of-way to a property where individuals are setting off fireworks and then return to a specific private property that can be identified. It allows for a violation to be attached that way. And so what that would require, unless fire or the police officer is able to identify the individual setting or identify that the individual's setting off the fireworks, where he was located and where he went into or what location he went into, would require residents or witnesses to identify, one, the activity that's adjacent to the property, and then, second, the property where that person that was setting off the fireworks ended up. And so that's... It does have a provision for that. To answer your question, if the alleyway is adjacent to a specific property where the individual goes, then that could be assessed as a violation.
Well, thank you. And I think this is a tool that we haven't had in prior years. You know, I don't necessarily like to see enforcement measures, but this is one that has the attention of so many residents throughout our city. And this is more than an annoyance or nuisance. Fireworks are impacting sleep. There are many people who are deprived of sleep. There are animals that are having, you know, hard times dealing with these fireworks. There are veterans that are impacted. And so I think it's important for us to send a strong message. But I think the takeaway from this is, you know, moving forward, if you choose to do illegal fireworks in our city, you are putting your own housing at risk. And I think that is a strong message to take away from this. Thank you. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Councilman Zindejas? You're on mute, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. My third question would be, is there a way to penalize or legally discourage people from even participating in close proximity to illegal fireworks being lit as a way to discourage people from not only lighting up these fireworks, but also from being complicit in a way? You know, like if they're involved in, you know, the whole show thing? Like, is there a way that we can also cite them, even if it's like a $50 citation or something like that for those that are encouraging the firework lighters?
And to answer your question, Councilwoman Zindejas, the ordinance does have language that allows for... Well, includes a definition of a host as any person who organizes, supervises, officiates, conducts, controls, or otherwise is in charge of an activity at a property. And the best example I can give for that is someone that maybe has organized some kind of, you know, firework party at a particular location. And based on the information that either PD receives or information received from witnesses at the scene, that they can identify this person who organized the event, that that person could be held accountable as a host. And so I think that answers part of your question. It doesn't necessarily apply to all the individuals that are participating at that location, but it does provide for that type of liability as a host for the person that can be determined to have coordinated or supervised the event.
Great. If we wanted to do something... If we wanted to do something like that, how would we go about it? Is there a way to do something like that?
Councilmember, if I, this is city attorney. If I understand your question correctly, this ordinance does not, and I don't think legally you could, craft an ordinance that would cite someone who's watching a fireworks. It may be somebody who's just walking by. It may be a resident or a neighbor. I think what Art was explaining that we're trying to capture in the ordinance is if someone is participating, organizing it or at the host location and setting off fireworks, we can certainly go after them. But I'm not sure where you would. We would have to do a lot more research on where you could draw that line.
Okay, okay, understandable. And yes, more research would be welcome to try to see, you know, because usually from what I hear from my residents, it's usually a little group that, you know, gets together, likes the fireworks, and tries to disappear after they light it. So that was my reasoning for asking that question. Also, one more question. The city has in place a system to track down the sales of fireworks as another approach to stopping the practice of fireworks being set off in the first place, correct? I mean, do we track it by the calls? I just want to make sure that my residents and actually all the residents are informed on how we track the fireworks and the calls that are being placed.
I can speak to that really generally. We have through the emergency services, the emergency line, whenever a call for service comes in regarding fireworks, it is tracked by that office. And they track what, they track whether or not you see a fireworks activity in a specific address. They also track whether or not you hear what you think is a firework, and they will note that it sounds like a firework. So we track all of the data related to what we think are fireworks calls. Now, I wasn't clear, did I hear you ask a question about confiscation of fireworks or fireworks sales? Because that is something that PD also, that was one of the other priorities that we were asked to look at to see if police could step up the efforts to confiscate fireworks. And I know since the beginning of this year, there have been a couple of confiscations. And I think the chief is on the line, and he could probably speak to that a little bit more specifically.
Thank you. Yes, I thank you very much, Linda, for that explanation. I think that it would be great to share what the confiscation successes have been. So, Chief, I might have to queue in again, but I'd like to give you time to answer that and to share that with our residents.
And this is Linda Tatum again. Staff is also finalizing a report. I think we mentioned during last week's meeting that we are preparing a report so that council can see since the working group came together last July, there have been a number of successes and a number of new initiatives that were done by this group. And we'd like to just lay those all out for the city council. And that report will be coming out to you within the next 10 days. And that will include the confiscations data as well.
Okay, wonderful. Did Chief, did you want to share? Chief Luna, did you want to share about your last confiscations? Or should we wait for that report? I mean, maybe it's not available right now.
I think staff had, I think staff had mentioned that they wanted to, that they're still putting that major report together that they. Mr. Morica, I know you had mentioned that you were going to put together a big report that will include the PD info.
Yes, we are planning a written report that will have a lot of information that you can share with the community. So we can do a quick oral report now or wait for the written report later.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Did you want, do you want a quick oral report now?
Yes, if possible, please. Just a quick, small one. That would be great.
Chief, can you give a quick report?
Yes, sir. Robert Luna here, mayor and members of the city council. So we were allotted funding that all of you made sure that we had. And part of our strategy was to give this money to some of our narcotic teams and directed enforcement teams. And this is a warning to everyone who's listening out there. We're doing by bus. That means if you're out there selling fireworks, our intent is to arrest you or cite you and confiscate the fireworks. And our teams have been doing that. We've confiscated close to 1,000 pounds of fireworks thus far, and we plan on doing many more. So again, just a warning, anybody who's out there, you're going to get a very heavy fine for trying to sell fireworks in the city of Long Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. And I know that you had commander also, and you had shared that with me as well, city manager. And, you know, that's one of the reasons I wanted our residents to hear that we have been confiscating fireworks. With that said, one last question, and I may have to queue up right back up. But hopefully I have enough time to ask this question. I know that using the Go Long Beach.
Your time is up.
Okay, I will queue back up. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. You know, this is a difficult issue every year. You know, it's a cultural issue within our city fireworks. And every year, the city council demonstrates that they're working on it. And city staff also brings their best foot forward as it relates to policy and enforcement, culture, education. And so I want to just acknowledge the city attorney's office, the police department, and city staff for really taking the feedback from the council over the course of the past few years on this issue and coming forward with a new tool in our quiver. I think it's important every year that we do let the residents know that it is a process, but we are continuing to work on this issue. It is frustrating. We know that veterans, folks with animals, or people who just want, you know, calm and quiet in their neighborhood. It's a difficult issue. We need to continue to figure it out. The one thing, the one question, one request that I would make to staff is, I know and I am supportive of the strategy around block parties this year that Councilman Mungo, Councilmember Mungo, talked about. I'm supportive of that. We do those things in the ninth district. Kind of the culture here, too. But I would like to know, as we approach particularly the Fourth of July, if we need to do more outreach in key areas or, you know, if folks don't know about the program, about the fee waiver, or if they're not particularly engaging in some of the high firework neighborhoods. If we can just, you know, give some periodic updates, a city manager memo or two from four just on how we're going by district, that would be helpful, particularly for me to understand what's happening in the community that I represent. But I just wanted to just chime in. I know it's an important issue. I want to thank staff, and I want to just offer encouragement to the residents that we'll continue working on this. Thanks a lot.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Thank you. My comments actually fall in line with Vice Mayor Richardson. So when I look at the high firework areas, we know what streets typically have calls. And these are the streets that have calls all year round. So I guess my call to action, and we only have 30 days, is we know the addresses of the property owners of those properties on those streets. And I would love to see a noticing to those communities and to those groups. The situs address is the address that the property owner requests that property tax paperwork is mailed to. A lot of mailing lists buy those from the assessor's office regularly to solicit them with advertisements about refinancing and the such. But we, as a city, can work with the county of Los Angeles to get that download of the situs addresses for the whole city. We could easily geocode those pretty quickly or have, they have a GIS guy in the assessor's office. If you ask them to geocode the specific areas you want and download those addresses, you then have the exact addresses of the property owners. You know the addresses of the renters because they live in the addresses that you were searching. And you'd be able to mail out those notices and alternatives, including if your neighbor is someone who you believe to be, someone who interacts with illegal fireworks, perhaps we offer a reward. And/or we say, here's a tool in the free block party to ensure that you and your neighbors are out in the community, all watching to be good witnesses and prevent, through peer pressure, the use of fireworks. And as Councilwoman Zandehas said, all fireworks are illegal in Long Beach. So I say illegal fireworks, all fireworks are illegal in Long Beach, and they do terrorize our community. So I just want to make sure that we work with the resources available for noticing. I know that today, or last night, I should say, in my newsletter, it was sent out to thousands of people about these resources. But again, 50% of the block parties are already on the east side. And I think that it's been an effective tool for keeping illegal fireworks down as I've driven around the city on the Fourth of July. And I hope to partner with any council member who wants to help their neighborhoods get those tools and resources to make sure that every single block in this city has a chance at a peaceful Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Go back to Councilwoman Zandehas, and then we'll go for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and city council members for bearing with me. You all know how passionate I am about this item. My last question is, let me get to it real quick. My last question is, are we expecting to have our The Go Long Beach app activated? I know that I heard that we were working on being able to have that available for our residents to be able to report the fireworks that are being led. Do we know if this is a function that will be available to us before the Fourth of July?
Councilwoman, this is Linda Tatum responding. The Go Long Beach app is still in development, but given that we still have some work to do to marry or to make sure that the Go Long Beach app is compatible with the prosecutor's website, we are not going to attempt to do that prior to the Fourth. Rather, we are driving all of the complaints right now directly to the prosecutor's website. That website is up. It's familiar. Residents know about it already. So we'd like to not confuse them and have two separate websites that they could report to. But shortly after the Fourth, we will continue to work on that so that we can somehow make the two compatible and speak to each other so that they both essentially do the same function, or we'll somehow combine them. But we're looking at all of the options. But for this coming fourth, we want to make sure we're driving all of the traffic to the prosecutor's website because they've had some successes with prosecution as a result of the uploaded video and other data that provides evidence for them to follow up with actual court filing. So we're hopeful that we'll see a lot more of that activity this holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Tatum. Thank you very much for that information. I know that I get a little bit anxious and I want things done right away, right? But I think the best thing to do is to do it accurately and efficiently. So if we have to wait a little bit longer to make sure that we have a successful Go Long Beach app where we can really, you know, report through there, I'm really looking forward to seeing that in the coming months, hopefully before New Year's. But thank you very much, Ms. Tatum. Thank you, everybody, for answering my question. This is something that has been very important to me for, you know, since before I was on council. I want to give a huge, huge thanks to city staff for your willingness to address this issue continuously. I want to give another huge shout out to our city prosecutor, Doug Hopperd, who has been amazing in creating a portal where we can have these instances reported right directly to him. And I think that that has been a lifesaver. And I'm very happy that we have had success with that. I want to give another big thanks to our fireworks committee. And I just could not, could not pass up this opportunity to also give thanks to our amazing Facebook group, Long Beach Against Illegal Fireworks. Thank you for all the input that you have given us throughout this past year and a half. And thank you for working with all of the above mentioned to make sure that we have a fire, firework-free city as we move forward. And thank you for caring for the whole community.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor, this vote is the first vote of two votes that will be on the urgency.
Our first vote, Councilwoman Zandehas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Suppana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Uranga?
Aye.
Councilman Alston?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carries. A second vote, Councilwoman Zandehas?
Did we, I'm sorry, did we ask for public comment on this item?
Yes, we had public comment on this item.
We don't have any public.
We did, and the speaker, we had a speaker, and they spoke prior to council debate.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Zandehas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Suppana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Uranga?
Aye.
Councilman Alston?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Let's go ahead, and we have two more ordinances to approve. Let's get these approved first. Item 14, please.
Item 14 is report from Development Services. Recommendation to declare ordinance amending the Long Beach municipal code relating to construction in the vicinity of abandoned oil wells. Read and adopted as read. City Y.
Okay, I think, can I get a motion, please? Councilmember Uranga, can I get a second? Councilmember Mungo, Councilmember Uranga, do you have any comments?
No, I did not. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Thank you. I don't know if everyone recognizes the significance of this item. There are properties throughout our community that really could be used for some amazing economic development opportunities. This item started years ago. And through the great work of our Economic Development Department, they have really followed this through to fruition. So years of great work behind this. And these are the kinds of things that often go unnoticed. It really can change the future. So we're really appreciative of this.
Thank you, councilwoman. Is there any public comment on this?
Yes, our first speaker is Elliot Gonzalez.
Good evening, city council members. My battery is running low. I just wanted to say that I would like to see that the city council ensures that the companies that have done this drilling and have made money from these wells are responsible for closing up this well and all of our wells and making sure that they are free of bending and any other toxins that may still be present on the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anna Christensen.
Item 14 will OK construction on top of abandoned oil wells, even if they are not shut down in conformance with state standards, like building on a volcano. Sierra Club's Low Cerritos Wetlands Task Force and Pavugna Wetlands Protectors request a no vote or a postponement of this second reading. We propose the following changes. Adhere to CalGEM recommendations, reset backs for construction near abandoned wells. No construction over abandoned wells. No impracticality or hardship exemptions allowed. Reapproving abandoned wells as is. No new construction allowed unless and till all abandoned wells, including orphaned wells on the project site, meet current CalGEM standards. Regulations for construction on sites with detectable amounts of methane must be consistent, meet CalGEM and LA County standards, and not tailored to specific projects. The city and its various employees and agents will not be indemnified for issuing projects. and its various employees and agents will not be indemnified for issuing project permits or approvals on sites with abandoned orphaned wells that have not been shut down according to CalGEM standards in effect at the time of construction. No low-cost or affordable housing projects may be constructed on top of abandoned wells nor on properties with improperly abandoned orphaned wells. This amendment promises equivalent regulations to those of CalGEM, what is actually equivocating because it uses ambiguous language so as to conceal the truth. Equivalent means not differing, the same words or significance, while claiming to provide, quote, "better outcomes for public safety," resulting in a, quote, "healthier, cleaner, and more viable environment for Long Beach." The proposed amendment actually eases state environmental protections to the benefit of developers. Constructing buildings over oiled oil wells, capped or not, is, quote, "just not a smart thing," according to Chris McCullough, a former CalGEM district deputy for Southern California, quote, "because gases that were naturally venting into the air and dissipating are now potentially getting trapped. If that gas were to build up and ignite, you have a potential for catastrophic damage to structures and life." The amendment's problematic language. CalGEM recommends that, this is your language, the proposed regulations allow construction over wells, including those that have not been safely abandoned or properly plugged. Only construction projects involving caregiving facilities, hospitals, or schools must continue to meet current standards. That should tell you something. If you want to build a school on it, why build a home on it? For wells not abandoned, the current CalGEM standards, to the current CalGEM standards, a claim of impracticality or hardship can be submitted, and the development coordinator shall have the authority to approve the well. And I don't know, I thought I'd be out of time by now. I have more. Additional problematic language.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Cantrell. Ann Cantrell? Our next speaker is Corliss Lee. Corliss Lee?
Hi, this is Corliss Lee. My concerns tend toward what I saw in the PowerPoint presentation. You're talking about reducing the requirements of the CalGEM program and replacing it with a Long Beach-specific set of requirements. The presentation was a little loosey-goosey. It basically sounds like we don't want to use CalGEM requirements. We want something less comprehensive, but we haven't figured that all out yet. My concern is, why are we abandoning existing controls before the new process is defined? While it doesn't happen often, methane explosions have occurred, as reported in the news. The oil-contaminated sites have long been considered unsuitable for development because of environmental and safety issues. However, as I understand it, new products are making it possible to build on these sites. The wording in the PowerPoint presentation made it sound like the new requirements and process that we will use in place of CalGEM are not well defined as of yet. The presentation described existing controls where it talks about cement plugs and setbacks. So the idea was to keep humans further away from danger. The Long Beach Proposed Regulations, their equivalency standards, talked about less cement plugs, and then it says, "or other approach subject to study." So that's a case where we haven't defined it yet. The presentation goes on to say that we should allow development of certain projects over abandoned wells. And that means no setbacks. And it says, "subject to certain safety provisions." And I didn't see those defined there. Certain process, create a process to locate and examine well conditions. That process should already be defined before you approve this. Create a process to test and monitor wells. That seems to be the most important control to have, but this process doesn't appear to have been designed yet. It seems that before you approve anything, those processes should be documented, and they should have decision trees in them that guide toward more stringent requirements in highly contaminated areas. The PowerPoint presentation said alarm and sensor mitigation system can be required if the setbacks are reduced and humans are closer to the contaminated site. It would seem concerns for safety should result in the document saying they will be required. The decision process should be well documented, deciding when to test and monitor wells, who does it, how often, in a rush to build.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Zandee House?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Price? Councilman Suppanow?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mango?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Uranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. And the last ordinance is fifteen.
Item fifteen is report from Development Services, recommendation to declare ordinance amending the Long Beach municipal code relating to methane gas mitigation, read and adopted as read, CDY.
Can I get a motion in a second, please? Motion by Vice Mayor Richardson, second by Councilmember Uranga. Vice Mayor, did you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Nope. Councilmember Uranga, any comments?
Look, I would, thank you.
Okay, then I'll do public comment and then we'll go to a vote.
Our first speaker is Anna Christensen.
Listen, I'm Anna, not Ann Cantrell. You didn't let Ann Cantrell speak on the last resolution because you dialed me by mistake. So try to make up for that, even though you're ignoring our comments. Agenda item fifteen, amendment's additional problematic language. It's not about public safety. It's, quote, "providing a more efficient regulatory process for the applicants." It's all about the applicants. The city will not be held accountable. Future owners and occupants of the property will be notified that, you know, you're not meeting CalGEM recommendations and that CalGEM does not approve building over wells. But they will still be expected to indemnify the city and its various employees and agents. So no matter what, the city's off the hook. Here's some additional recommendations to think about since you're voting this one along. Reinstate the Thailand's monies set aside in the annual budget for the cost of abandoning city wells. You waived those in 2021. At least take some responsibility for properly shutting down your own wells in the future. Notify those owning property with abandoned wells and residents living on or near abandoned well sites of the associated health and safety risks, including methane gas and other toxic fumes and possible oil spills and explosions. Assist property owners having abandoned well sites on their land to ensure that these wells are shut down according to CalGEM standards. Study the impact of abandoned wells on public health and safety and on the city's water wells, as well as the specific impacts of an individual well being shut down. And just possibly, just possibly, listen to the residents of Marina Pacifica and please get Beach Oil Mineral Partners to stop poisoning them and the entire wetlands with their storage tank. AKQMD can't do it, CalGEM can't seem to do it. Nobody can seem to stop this toxic pollution. And by the way, it's 700 gallons of polluted water a minute, when our own city staff stated that no water in Long Beach can legally go anywhere from wells but down in the ground. And yet, that oil company is transporting 700 gallons of polluted water a minute across the street, and the fumes are poisoning the community. So you want more. You want more building and more passes. But let's try, we insist that we have a healthy community. This is out of control, the addiction to oil by the city council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Cantrell.
Good evening, Ann Cantrell, speaking on items fourteen and fifteen for Sierra Club Carp and River Park Coalition. This is the second reading, an opportunity for council to deny the proposed ordinance changes for building on abandoned oil well and methane sites. The staff report states, quote, "Long Beach currently requires that construction projects proposing to develop near wells adhere to CalGEM standards. The proposed action will create tailored regulations specific to Long Beach that provide better outcomes," unquote. Better outcomes for whom? The answer can be found in the negative declaration. Quote, "The city has received numerous requests from potential developers and property owners regarding development of habitable and non-habitable structures in the vicinity of oil gas wells. Methane leaks from abandoned wells, pipelines, or processing equipment can occur and result in hazardous conditions for adjacent uses while substantially increasing greenhouse gas emissions. The current CalGEM well abandonment standards prohibit development on sites with previously abandoned wells in the city," unquote. This proposed ordinance is an attempt to eliminate CalGEM regulations and allow more development in places such as Wrigley, Bixby Knoll, Alameda Heights, the Los Cerritos Wetlands, and other oil and methane-producing areas. CalGEM requires as many as eight cement plugs and that all structures be set back certain distances from the abandoned wells. This ordinance will allow the use of only three cement plugs. It also allows building directly over abandoned wells with only a membrane barrier to contain the methane. This will result in putting the lives and health of the residents at risk. The buildup of flammable and toxic methane has been compared to living on top of a volcano. By requiring such projects as hospitals, caregiving facilities, schools, and high-rises to continue following the current CalGEM standards, the city is recognizing the dangers to human health and safety for some, but not all residents. It's not too late for this council to deny this ordinance change and adhere to current CalGEM standards. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. And please go ahead and cast your votes. Roll call.
Councilwoman Zandee House?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Suppanow?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mango?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Uranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and go back now and do public comment, please. So I know we have non-agenda public comment. So we'll go through that and then go back to the regular agenda. Thank you.
Our first speaker for non-agenda public comment is Corliss Lee.
This is Corliss Lee, and I wanted to talk to you about bills going through the state legislature. There's several bad housing bills. SB nine and SB ten are the two I've been focused on, specifically SB nine. That is the bill that would do away with single-family zoned housing, replacing it with lot splits and fourplexes. If the city allows ADUs as well, it can be eight units where once there was one, in any neighborhood in the state, except historical neighborhoods. Parking is not required if within half a mile of a transit stop. In Long Beach, that is just about everywhere. That condition alone will create a lot of misery if implemented. Over eighty cities have come out against SB nine. Long Beach has done nothing. Several Long Beach neighborhood groups, the East Side Voice Lakewood Village Neighborhood Association, South of Connet Neighbors, Friends of Belmont Shore, have come out against these bills. Multiple letters have been sent to our city council asking for the bills to be agendized for a resolution opposing these bills from the city of Long Beach. You have done nothing. These bills are not even on the list to be studied by the state legislative committee. You know the public opposes density. The 2018 LUE brought out record crowds that made it clear. We have experience in Long Beach with upzoning that created the Cracker Boxes in the 1980s. There was much proof of the negative impacts that included increases in crime, traffic and parking problems, and garbage everywhere. Problems with infrastructure cannot be overlooked, but they have been in this bill. Last year, the same bill was put forward as SB 1120, and our council had the same reaction. They did nothing. You are failing the community by ignoring these bills. I ask again that the council get this on the agenda and vote on creating a resolution against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abraham Zavala.
Hello, my name is Abraham Zavala, and I am a community organizer with the Long Beach Residents Empowered Organization, also known as ZIBRE. I would like to share with you this evening the concern that hundreds of tenants are, that we work with sharing with us, and that is substantial remodeling evictions. On June 30th, all COVID-related tenant protections will come to an end. Many are calling this massive wave of evictions, the eviction cliff. Of the many factors that will contribute to this looming housing catastrophe are the ongoing substantial remodel evictions taking place throughout the city. From the many community meetings that we've had in all districts, we estimate that thousands of permits for remodels have been issued. Is anyone in the city overseeing if these permits are for units that are occupied? How many people are being displaced? Thousands upon thousands. The city can help mitigate this ongoing disaster by establishing a program to fairly oversee and track how many properties are being remodeled. Until the city council creates a fair process, we ask and call on city council to create a temporary moratorium to provide protections for tenants who are impacted by this particular ordinance and other ordinance. So I waive my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Manduana.
Hello, I'm a community organizer with the Long Beach Tenants Union. I'm calling to bring attention to a crucial issue facing thousands of Long Beach families, and that issue is the massive flood of evictions that will commence on June 30th, also known as the eviction cliff, when COVID-related tenant protections are set to end. Many of you and/or your staff have heard the stories of countless tenants who are set to face displacement. You've heard them through peaceful public demonstrations, social media channels, direct calls to your offices, and meetings. I'll give a few examples of these stories to repeat them for other council members and other elected positions, such as the city attorney, who may not have heard them. There's Maribel, who lives with her husband and her son in the ninth district, who have been facing ongoing attempts of eviction since 2019. When she expressed her rights, the property management company then used substantial remodeling as a reason to evict her, even though none of the remodeling is considered substantial under the state definition. There's Sylvia, who lives with her son in the first district, and similarly has been facing ongoing eviction attempts since 2019. When she expressed her rights avoiding an illegal rent increase of 90%, she was served an eviction notice for substantial remodeling with permits pulled from the city after, I repeat, after the landlord safely conducted remodeling of her unit. This remodeling was conducted safely, again, with her remaining in the unit. These are just a few examples of thousands around the city. The city should take action to stop preventable unnecessary substantial remodel evictions by removing substantial remodel from the just cause reasons for eviction in Long Beach. Establish a program to oversee the rehabilitation of rental properties, and in the meanwhile, establish an indefinite moratorium until this program is in place. This can and should be done on June 15th with a special meeting before July 1st. Community members deserve bold legal counsel and leadership from their council members that protects its constituents. The city council and city attorney must work together in prioritizing the safety and health of the many community members rather than the profits of a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elsa Tong. Our next speaker is Elsa Tong.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Elsa Tong, active resident of District Seven. Come July 1st, in just three weeks, all Long Beach tenants will face a devastating eviction cliff. All COVID-related tenant protections, county and state, will end on June 30th, and there will be a massive flood of evictions and homelessness. Actually, this is a double eviction cliff, as not only eviction moratoriums will expire, but rent debt and current rent will be due on July 1st. In LA County, as of the end of March 2021, rent debt totaled $1.3 billion. Yes, that's 1.3 billion with a B dollars, and approximately 295,000 households are behind on rent. The average rent debt in LA County is $4,500 per household. As with most things, this rent debt crisis is a racial justice issue. 26% of Black renters, 20% of Latinx renters, and 18% of Asian Pacific Islander renters are behind on rent compared with just 11% of white renters. Reminder that 80% of Black residents in Long Beach are renters, and Black women and mothers are the most rent burdened. Across the country, the COVID-19 pandemic has caused millions of households to fall behind on rent through no fault of their own. In addition to the rent debt crisis, and despite city, county, and statewide eviction moratoriums, eviction filings have never stopped. In fact, eviction filings increased by three and a half times once the California Judicial Council lifted its emergency rules in October 2020. The city must take action now to stop preventable unnecessary evictions by removing substantial remodel from the just cause reasons for eviction in Long Beach. Invalid illegal remodel eviction notices, eviction threats, and harassment of tenants are rampant in the city. The city should take the fair step of establishing a program to oversee the habitability and rehabilitation of rental properties, which will both keep families in their homes and allow for renovation of properties. In the interim, the city needs to implement a moratorium on substantial remodel evictions while we work to create a fair habitability and rehabilitation program. With the eviction cliff coming up on July 1st, the council should take up substantial remodel reform at its June 15th meeting next Tuesday, and schedule a special meeting before the July 1 eviction cliff, so that all Long Beach rent-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melody Osuna.
Good afternoon, my name is Melody Osuna. I'm an attorney with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. We call ourselves LaFla. For over 90 years, LaFla has provided free legal services to residents of LA County, including Long Beach. We have a community office in Long Beach. We run the domestic violence and self-help clinics at the courthouse and various clinics throughout the city. Over half of our organization is focused on housing and maintaining safe and affordable housing, and I came today to speak to you about the impending eviction cliff. As you've heard from previous callers, when I say eviction cliff, I'm referring to the potential massive flood of evictions following June 30th that could potentially leave a huge wave of homelessness. After June 30th, the end of this month, there will no longer be state or county protections for tenants who are impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Studies have shown that only 10% of tenants in eviction cases have attorneys, and those without attorneys are vulnerable to illegal evictions. Today, I ask the city to take action to stop preventable unnecessary evictions on the basis of substantial remodel. Invalid remodel notices and verbal threats of remodel evictions are rampant, and tenants need to know that they are safe from these threats. This is an immediate and urgent crisis that will begin July 1st. The city has the ability to remove substantial remodel as a just cause reason for eviction from their tenant protection ordinance. In order, in addition, I ask that the city set up a tenant habitability program for landlords and tenants to work together to safely have their units remodeled and keep them affordable. And finally, I request the city council to put in place a moratorium on substantial remodel evictions until this tenant habitability program can be established. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Seferino Martires.
Hello, my name's Seferino. I am also, again, in favor of the previous proposals that others have made. The city should take action to stop preventable unnecessary substantial remodel eviction by removing the substantial, by removing the substantial removal, remodel eviction, by removing substantial remodel from the just cause reason for eviction in Long Beach. And in interim, the city needs to place a temporary moratorium of at least 90 days on substantial remodel evictions while we work to create a fair process for our residents. Invalid remodel notices and verbal threats of remodel evictions are rampant, and tenants need to know that they are safe from these threats from landlords. This is an immediate crisis, as someone who suffers from this, and an urgent crisis as well that will begin July 1st. The council should take substantial remodel reform as its June 15th meeting and schedule a special meeting before July 1st, so all renters can have stability and security. As a resident of the West Side and specifically around the seventh district, I think it is very important that all of Hispanic, Latino, and Asian communities should be protected through these measures. I waive my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Miles Haisley.
Good evening. I'm calling today to advocate for tenant protections, which are going to be expiring. The COVID tenant protections will be expiring June 30th, and I believe that the city needs to take steps to ensure that tenants are protected from unjust eviction underneath the substantial remodel cause. There's going to be a flood of evictions, and this is going to result in homelessness of many families within Long Beach. Currently, substantial remodel notices and verbal threats of substantial remodel evictions are rampant. Many tenants are experiencing them, and tenants need to know that they are protected from these threats. This is an immediate and urgent crisis that will begin July 1st. Therefore, the city of Long Beach and council members need to act to prevent unnecessary substantial remodel evictions by removing substantial remodel from the just cause reasons for eviction in Long Beach. The city should establish a program to oversee the rehabilitation of rental properties in a way that allows for renovation of properties, but most importantly, keeps Long Beach families in their homes. Until such a program exists, the city must implement a moratorium of at least 90 days on substantial remodel evictions. So I call on the council to take up substantial remodel reform at its June 15th meeting next Tuesday, and schedule a special meeting before July 1st, so all rental families can have stability and security, and to implement a moratorium of at least 90 days on substantial remodel evictions. I'll repeat myself. I call on the council to take up substantial remodel reform at its June 15th meeting and schedule a special meeting before July 1st, so all renting families can have stability and security, and to implement a moratorium of at least 90 days on substantial remodel evictions. The council can prevent real harm being enacted on tenants and keep their families in their homes. This is an issue for all of the constituents of Long Beach, because the stability and access to shelter is an issue for all of us and creates healthy and prosperous communities. The council needs to act to prevent landlords from using this substantial remodel as a way to evict tenants. I call on the council to, again, bring up the issue of substantial remodel reform.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Lopez.
Hello, honorable council members and mayor. My name is Maria. I'm in a town where many are living in fear. I say I'm undocumented, unafraid, and unapologetic. I'm a District One resident and a tenant rights organizer. Today, I would like to talk to you and acknowledge the giant eviction cliff that is coming our way, and with that, the rippling effects for future generations to come in dealing with housing issues. For the past year and a half, I have stood alongside tenants fighting their unjust evictions of substantial remodel that, up to this day, they are still fighting and resisting. Yet, emergency protections are coming to an end June 30th without a local solution. And come the first weekend of July, as many folks celebrate, quote, "independence," many will come home to an eviction notice. The council should take up substantial remodel reform at its June 15 meeting and schedule a special meeting before July 1st, so all renters can have stability and security. In the interim, I ask that the city place an indefinite moratorium on substantial remodel evictions while we work to create a fair process, and I remind us all that when renters rise, cities thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you for that. Now we're going on to the rest of the agenda. Let's go ahead and do item 22, or item 12.
Item 12 is a report from Economic Development, Parks, Recreation, Marine, and Public Works. Recommendation to authorize city manager to enter into three beach concessions agreements for the operation of concessions at various beach locations, Districts Two and Three.
Can I get a motion? Can I get a second, please? I got a second, but Councilman Austin? Councilwoman Allen, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. I'm excited to see these concession stands moving closer to opening. I know that we have a fair amount of work that's left to do on the Alameda Beach facility, but I know we're going to get there. I love looking out the back of my porch and seeing progress done daily. It also makes me happy to see that, you know, we're activating these spaces and getting back to normal. I know my colleague, Councilwoman Price, is having some connectivity issues, so she has, she had some comments to make on this item, too. Clerk, can you, can you just read her comments?
Councilwoman, we did not receive the comments from the council member.
Okay, okay. All right. I do have just a quick question. Do we have any updated timeline on the Alameda's facility?
Yes, I believe Eric Lopez is available and can answer that question.
Yes. Thank you, Tom. Councilwoman Allen, we are on track to come back to council in August with a recommendation for Alameda's. So Alameda's and Granada are a little more complicated. We're going to, we're still working on those, so those will be forthcoming.
Wonderful. Thank you, Eric, for that update. I appreciate it.
Councilman Austin, any comments?
Yes, obviously, I support this. Spent a lot of time at the beach, and our boardwalk, our bike path, and walking path are already really busy. You know, I think this addition particularly is right on time for the summer, concessions, to have a great, great summer here in Long Beach. I did want to hear, I know there's a presentation from staff, you know, I think this is a big item, if we could just get here a brief presentation to hear about what will be actually here for the public.
Sure thing. Let me do that in a minute. Councilwoman Sindejas, first.
Thank you, mayor. These projects sound so very exciting, and I know that it is something people are really looking forward to being able to enjoy. I was happy to hear that the cost for business were kept at a low, as low as possible, so that to be able to ensure that prices will be kept somewhat affordable for our residents, which is something that's very important to me. In addition to that, something that I have always wanted to ensure is to be part of the conversation when it comes to the development of new businesses and projects like these. And one of the things that is, as you know, very important to me is that we are ADA compliant, and we have accessibility for everyone to enjoy this, these amendments. So I'm really happy that we are being part of the conversation and that ADA compliance is actually part of the planning as we move forward. I know that these projects seem to be, you know, designed, you know, in phases, so I'm really, really excited to see all of the upcoming new, new ones that are coming in. And I'm so, like I said, I'm so very happy that they are ADA compliant, that way everyone here in Long Beach and from out of sight of Long Beach can enjoy these equally. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morica, do you have a quick staff presentation beyond what the agenda has?
Yes, we can certainly show a couple pictures of before and after work that's happened, and we'll skip over some of the terms, the real estate terms, and the council has those in front of them, but I'd like to show what these projects could look like. So John and Sergio.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, honorable mayor, council members. Really quickly, just as Tom mentioned, we have our five beach locations along our four miles of waterfront here in Long Beach. Just to highlight just the beautiful work that has been done. Here is an image of the Granada Beach concession, the before and after, and you can see kind of the enhancement that has been taking place. The next picture on your screen shows the public improvements that actually have been made to the Granada Beach Lot. This next image is a picture of the Junipero Beach concession, the before and after, and you can see the tremendous change that actually has taken place. And this next image shows the Junipero Beach concession area, public area, and the, just the tremendous change that took place with the addition of new play equipment. And as Eric mentioned, a forthcoming item that we will bring to you in August is going to be the Alameda's Beach concession, but here's a preview just showing the tremendous improvement at Alameda's Beach. Just quickly, very, very quickly, the goals of the concession was to really activate the waterfront, increase the use of the coast, and bring just a great overall assortment of mixes of tenants and uses. Here, I'll skip over a couple of these items just to keep it as brief as possible. I'm sorry, here we go. And just for the Bayshore Lot, we've actually selected Grillam All is the location that will have a five-year lease. The second location, Junipero, will have saltwater deck. And at Mother's Beach, we've selected Louisiana Charlie's, and selected Pedal Movement to provide beach amenities to three, at three locations, and really homes providing a micro-mobility program. And with that, we select and recommend these concessionaires for your approval. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. You guys have done a great job with this stuff. All of them look really, really great, and I'm just very excited about this moving forward. So thank you, staff. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, we just received a statement from Councilwoman Price. If I could read the comments into the record this evening?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I want to thank city staff for working diligently to pursue qualified concessionaires for these locations. I had the opportunity to receive a briefing from Director Lopez last week on the recommended vendors, and I'm excited to see this item come to council tonight. There have been so many Thailand's projects that have helped activate our beachfront in the past seven years, starting with the beach pedestrian path and then the concession stand upgrades. I don't think our beaches have ever looked so good or offered so many amenities for beachgoers throughout the city and region. I urge my colleagues to support this item tonight so that we can get these vendors operating at this site as soon as possible. That concludes her comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Sendejas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Supanal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mango?
Aye.
Councilwoman Saro?
Aye.
Councilmember Oranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Great, thank you. Let's see, item 19, please.
Item 19 is communication from Vice Mayor Richardson, Councilwoman Allen, and Councilmember Oranga. Recommendation to request city manager to execute all documents and agreements to accept funds from the South Coast Air Quality Management District.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
So moved.
Can I get a second, please? Second by Councilwoman Oranga. I see no public comment. Any additional comments, council members? Vice Mayor, no? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Sendejas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Supanal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mango?
Aye.
Councilwoman Saro?
Aye.
Councilmember Oranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin? Councilman Austin? Vice Mayor Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we have two resolutions. Let's start with item 20, the Juneteenth Resolution, please.
Item 20, communication from city attorney. Recommendation to adopt resolution recognizing Juneteenth as a day of celebration in Long Beach and calling for President Biden and Governor Newsom to make it a federal and state holiday, City Y.
Thank you. Councilmember Austin, I have a motion. Any additional comments, council member?
No.
Nope, okay. Councilmember Oranga, any additional comments?
Looking forward to it.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Sendejas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Supanal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mango?
Aye.
Councilwoman Saro?
Aye.
Councilmember Oranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Item 21.
Item 21 is communication from city attorney. Recommendation to adopt resolution in support of Medicare for All supporting legislation, policies, and grants, City Y.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dejas, motion, any comments?
Yes, I have a comment. First of all, I wanted to thank our city attorney for writing up this resolution in support of Medicare for All. It is no secret that our nation's healthcare system does not provide the most simple, accessible, nor affordable medical care that is needed, not only in the process of enrolling in healthcare. So it's so complex that it gives many people headaches, but it is also extremely expensive to, to the point where many folks have to choose between paying for food, housing, or healthcare. And usually, they choose the latter. It is completely under, it is completely unacceptable that in the wealthiest nation in the world, the only option and hope for many people to cover a loved one during an emergency medical situation is to be open to a GoFundMe account. I think that, you know, we need to do better than that. That's why I am 100% in support of this resolution and calling for the nation's healthcare program that will once and for all provide every person in the U.S. with healthcare. I'm also hoping that this new system leads to better access to mental health services, which is something that is in high demand and is very much needed, in particularly when addressing homelessness crisis that we're living in today. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please? Second by Councilman Allen. Any comments, Councilwoman?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Supporting this item was an absolutely no-brainer for me. And as I said many times as a candidate, healthcare is a human right, and being able to get quality healthcare should not be dependent on the job that you have. As many of you know, I am a breast cancer survivor, and I know how important having access to affordable and quality healthcare is. I'm grateful to my medical teams, and I know going through that, going through this experience without proper healthcare, you know, it could have been, it could have been fatal. Our system needs change, but until that happens, I will continue to be outspoken about the need for reform on our healthcare system. Thank you.
Thank you. I know there's no public comment. I'll just, just, let me just add, I also strongly support Medicare for All. I think, I think the clearest, one of the clearest kind of just things that have been, people have seen through the pandemic is just the need for free accessible healthcare and the need, if you think about how we got vaccines or tests out to folks, it was free, it was easy. If you didn't think that, you know, that healthcare was a human right for everyone before, you certainly should today. And there's also no question that someone's care should be tied to if someone is working or not, and whether they have private insurance through an employer or public, or type, under the type of insurance. Someone should have healthcare unconditionally. And so I'm really hopeful that this country is moving in a direction where much of the world, developed world is, as it relates to, to medical care. I'm also proud to be part of the Mayors for Medicare Coalition across the country, and it's definitely a growing, a growing group of mayors and cities. So thank you all for supporting this, and please go ahead and do a roll call vote on the resolution.
Councilwoman Sendejas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Supanal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mango? Councilwoman Mango?
Aye.
Councilwoman Saro?
Aye.
Councilmember Oranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you very much. We have, I think we're down to our last item, item 22, which is the staff item on the Queen Mary. Madam Clerk.
Item 22 is a report from Economic Development. Recommendation to authorize city manager to execute a contract with Evolution Hospitality for the continued operation of the Queen Mary and execute a contract with Moffett and Nichols to provide as needed engineering design services for critical repair work on the Queen Mary, District 2.
Thank you. Pass over to Mr. Modica and Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So everyone's been tracking this issue very, very closely. I know the city council has, and doing numerous closed sessions, and now here we are in open session. For over 40 years, the Queen Mary has been under some sort of contract or lease for an operator, whether that be a nonprofit or a for-profit institution, with varying results. We clearly have had that under other operating circumstances where that entity was responsible for both the risks and the rewards on the site. But that has now changed. We are now in full possession of the ship and controlling its future, which is an exciting time. It does come with both positives and negatives, and we'll go through a little bit of those today. But we're excited to take this next step with the Queen Mary. We knew that if this were an eventuality with exiting the bankruptcy, the city needed to be prepared quickly to step in and run an agreement to have a shipboard operator and to immediately start the repairs. And that's exactly what we're doing. So we're asking you tonight to really allow us to take the next step of bringing on an operator and to take the first step of bringing on engineering to quickly work on repairs, and we'll be back to you later with additional funding on those repairs. So I'd like John Kaiser to give a quick overview of the specific actions tonight, and then we're available to answer questions.
Thank you so much, Tom, and Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. As Tom said, there's two recommendations before you tonight. One is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for the immediate operations and caretaking of the ship while it's closed. The second is to approve the appropriation of funding, up to $500,000, so that we can begin the immediate design work for the critical repairs that we believe our engineers have identified as soon as the courts have settled the legal question about the lease. So I'm going to start with a quick overview, just to give you a sense of who Evolution Hospitality is. They are a trusted partner of the city. Over the last 11 years, they've been the on-ship operator with approximately 500 employees. They help to manage about $65 million in annual revenue-related activities for the 347 hotel rooms, five different restaurants, all the amazing banqueting, catering, et cetera, special events, tours, attractions, parking, property, engineering, maintenance, and security. And so they're really are a full-service operator. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that Evolution Hospitality also is wholly owned by Aimbridge Hospitality, which has almost 2,000 hotels worldwide. They operate some of the most high-end hotels in Marriott and Hilton and the Curios and some of the boutique hotels that you're familiar with, as well as resorts. So they're very, very capable, and they have a very large organization behind them, which is based in Dallas. But Evolution Hospitality is based right here in San Clemente. So we know their leadership, and we actually will be meeting with their leadership on the ship this week as they take over this caretaker agreement between the city and Evolution. So real quick about this actual agreement. This is, remember, the ship is closed right now, so there are no hotel guests. There are no banquets or Sunday brunches. And this is really about a short-term, six-month agreement with the option for just a one-six-month extension. Our goal is to address some of the repairs and a longer-term solution for the reopening of the ship. We're estimating $300,000 per month. This is a 1 million square foot facility. This is a big building in any right. And so ultimately, six months would give us not only all the utilities, payments, the security, the maintenance, running those big systems to make sure that nothing goes wrong out there. But it also provides us with some contingency funds to deal with some one-time issues. We need to freshen up some of those systems. And of course, there's publicly facing landscaping and things like that that we need to repair to make sure that the parks and other things surrounding the ship look good. This is also what we call basic and limited safeguard services while closed to the public. I mentioned we're trying to minimize damage and waste that might occur with a large facility like that being in sort of a closed mode. But the operator is not required to provide any additional services at the property unless we request it and unless we specifically approve it. So this will not be money available to the operator unless it's approved. Every single month, we'll also approve their management expenses and these payments. So the city manager recommendation on this caretaker agreement with Evolution Hospitality of San Clemente, California, is up to and not to exceed $2 million for this six-month period and one optional renewal period for the city manager for up to six months. We'll provide regular updates to the council about activities on the ship related to this caretaker agreement as we move along. We do that typically in written memos already. And so that way, the public and the city council are aware of how we're doing. The second recommendation here is really about moving quickly with the critical repairs that have been identified by our engineers in recent inspection reports. And so this is about design services. We won't be swinging any hammers over the next few weeks. We'll really be focused on getting what are called the construction bid specs together, really doing some additional investigation and inspection. And that way, we will work with our own public works department now, our own capital improvement project managers, to provide them with the right kinds of designs to do temporary. These are temporary immediate repairs that can be completed within about 180 days. Now, these, we're not asking for the construction costs tonight. We're simply asking for the design work. This will be for these five key projects. So temporary bilge systems would help to pump out water from the bottom of the ship. Remember, decades ago, previous administration removed the bilge pump systems, which would remove water from the hull of the ship if there was a flooding event. We need to get some temporary systems back in there as soon as possible. Also, an alarm system for water intrusion will help us. There is no leaking right now. We were in the hull yesterday. It's very dry down there. But ultimately, we want to have an early warning system that would notify not only our fire department, who is prepared to deal with all hazards responses, but also to help us to trigger some of those pumping systems and other things that might be needed. And the faster we move, the more we can prevent. There's also something called bulkhead. These are the barriers that separate the different compartments at the bottom of this ship. And some of those bulkheads have been removed or compromised as we've converted it to a hotel, you know, decades ago. But we need to, we need to make some temporary improvements. We need to do some testing and some modeling, and so this funding will help us to do that. And then removing our lifeboats. Those lifeboats are very heavy, and ultimately, we need to start removing those to take some of the pressure off what we call the side shell or the walls of the ship. And so this funding will not remove those lifeboats, but what it'll do is it'll put together the plans to efficiently, safely, and with an eye toward restoration of the two original lifeboats, of course, to deal, to put those plans in place so that we can move quickly once the courts have made final decisions. And then finally, some of these systems need an electrical source. So we need to rebuild portions of the electrical system as well as secure a new emergency generator. And we're talking about a very large generator that will actually sit on the land but serve the ship so that those big pumps and other things that we need to protect the ship are powered. So essentially, the design work and construction bids, we can complete those immediately while we wait for some of the legal issues to be settled by the judge. But temporary work can commence immediately after the city receives final decisions from the lease termination and bankruptcy court. Construction for some of these repairs will be defined more specifically during these design process. But right now, our engineers are saying we can get these temporary fixes done in six months, 180 days, and the ship will remain closed. We actually can move more quickly and get a lot more done when we don't have, you know, large events to move around, or we can be as loud as we need to be to get this stuff done quickly and efficiently. And the goal is to complete these emergency repairs by the end of the year. The funding decisions now will be based on the specifications and the bids. So once we're able to bid this construction, we'll know specifically what those actual prices will be. And then the funding sources. The city manager or financial management team will bring back some options for the city council. So this recommendation is two of two, to authorize the city manager up to $500,000, and we'll work with our current engineering consultant, Moffett and Nickel, our public works department, our CIP program, and ultimately come back to the city council with some funding sources at a later time. This one will be paid for by our Critical Thailand's Operating Fund. With that, I'll prop up my report, happy to answer any questions, and turn it back over to Tom.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That's what we're doing now. We will be back later, expected right now at the end of July, to really have a fuller discussion about the Queen Mary, about the future, about some of the things that we're looking at for potential partnerships or alternatives, and we'll be scheduling that with the public and the council in July.
Thank you, Mr. Modica. Let me first go to the council. I have Councilwoman Allen.
Yes, I'd like to first make a motion that we approve these two contracts.
The staff recommendation, okay. I see a second by Councilwoman Saro. Councilwoman Allen?
Yes. I just want to first say thank you, John, for the concise, informative, and, you know, the detailing of exactly what these contracts will accomplish. I think that it's going to be absolutely critical that we continue regular operations and maintenance on the ship as we take back ownership for the first time in decades. Evolution has been the hotel operator for years and has performed well. I had an opportunity to tour the ship yesterday, and I definitely have a firsthand knowledge. I understand the scale and I understand the scale and understand the scope of the necessary repairs. The Queen Mary has been a world symbol of Long Beach, and I think it's just important that we maintain the ship. I move that, you know, we approve these two contracts and until further discussion in July. I do have a question for staff, just for clarification. John Kaiser, the critical repair work that you're referring to that's going to happen on the ship, can you talk about who is going to be managing those repairs or who's going to be overseeing those repairs?
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. So we're really happy that our Public Works Capital Improvement Project Team manages most all city infrastructure projects. And now that we're able to step in and do these repairs ourselves, our engineers, Moffett and Nickel, and some of their expert subcontractors will help to design and provide input to the actual specifications for the approach and the construction. But these projects will be managed in-house by our Capital Improvement Projects Managers from Public Works.
All right. Thank you, John. And then also, will any of the bids, as we go out and look for folks that can do these repairs, who's going to be managing those bids and that process?
Absolutely. So we have a very rigorous internal competitive bid process with, you know, certain policies and procedures that we have to follow. So this work will be bid by our Public Works Capital Improvement Projects Team as well, following all of our city financial policies and procedures and all the controls that are required, not only forbidding the work, awarding the work, potentially bringing those contracts back to council depending on their size, but also then managing the review of payments and invoicing, collecting the documentation, and ensuring that all the work is completed in the ways that the contractors have documented.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sorrow.
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Kaiser for the presentation on the two contracts, and I'm in support of it. I think, you know, there's certainly been a lot that's gone on with this Queen Mary, but I think this is the next best step forward, and that's why I support this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. I think...
Uh, thank you. I'm here, Mr. Mayor. Hold on one second.
Okay, we can hear you too. You're good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am actually in an airport, so I want to thank everyone for indulging me and allowing me the opportunity to share a few comments on this very important item. I want to thank, first of all, staff for the presentation. I think it was very valuable to hear what the scope of tonight's item is, but I do believe that there are a few points that we need to make sure that we fully discuss as we approve this item. If I can just have one moment to pull up my notes here. My apologies. Just give me one second here. I'm literally just walking off of an airplane. So just so everyone knows, I'm accompanying our Long Beach youth and a national youth rowing competition in Florida, and our plane just landed in the middle of a major rainstorm. So the item before us tonight was certainly a foreseeable item, although the timing of it was sudden and unexpected. There is no doubt that the Queen Mary is an icon for the city of Long Beach, and it is certainly an asset that is universally recognizable, and the city of Long Beach is connected to the image of the ship. It is a part of our city and a part of our history. The many efforts have failed to invest in the ship and make sure that it is maintained. Time and time again, the efforts have failed. We are now in a situation where the ship's operation and maintenance responsibilities have fallen to the city. While the total city asset that includes the vast coastline property as well as the ship presents a new opportunity for the city, the cost of true historic preservation of this ship is significant, and it is an unrealistic expenditure for the city at this time. I am in support of tonight's item, which dedicates a specific amount of Tidestones funds to be used at this time. And these are for the immediate needs of the ship. But as I have done in the past, I must express concern about leveraging any Tidestones or general fund monies, should that be requested in the future, towards the maintenance and operation of the ship. In 2016, I voted against an item that leveraged the Tidestones Fund to support the effort of urban commons to conduct maintenance and repairs on the ship. I was concerned at the time about a worst-case scenario that we were told would be unlikely and unforeseeable. Unfortunately, that turned out to be exactly what happened, and the Tidestones Fund has already had to cover the debt service at a level of approximately $2.5 million. We have a fiduciary duty to protect the public's money. If any significant monies were needed in the future to support the maintenance and repair of this ship, I would want the public to weigh in on that decision. There are many competing projects that the city is currently working on, and it's likely most, if not all of them, would have to be deferred in order to meet the maintenance demands of the ship. That's certainly a decision the public would have to weigh in on. How that input would be provided is not before us, though, yet, and that decision for us to take over the ship alone without partners is still premature. For now, I am hopeful that the opportunity presented from this asset as a whole, including the waterfront property, make this a desirable site for future investment for any entity that is equipped to oversee the preservation of the ship and to closely monitor the future development of the site adjacent to the ship. I hope that creativity in the preservation of the ship as a monument and in streamlining the ship's current operations are considered as part of the process. The ship's current location seems to be contributing to its rapid demise. I think there are tremendous opportunities for this site, given its location and the totality of the opportunities that accompany the city asset. I look forward to hopefully seeing those opportunities materialize in the coming months. For now, I would like to ask city staff if it's possible for us to reach out to the federal government to see if the Queen Mary would possibly qualify as a national monument similar to other attractions throughout the country. I'm curious as to what that process would be and whether or not the Queen Mary is a feasible consideration. So I would request, if it's acceptable to the maker of the motion, that city staff consider that as an option when they come back to us in July. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, for me, the last part cut off some. Can you repeat the friendly, Councilwoman Price?
Sure. If city staff can take a look at the process with the federal government to assess the feasibility of the Queen Mary being considered a national monument, such that it would be treated similarly to other monuments throughout the country.
So it's looking at national monument status, I think, is for staff to look at that. Is that correct, Councilwoman?
Much better articulated, yes. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So that would be added to the, yeah, I mean, I think that's, it's always good to look at that. I think Councilwoman Price made a friendly. Councilwoman Allen?
Yes, I would accept it. Absolutely.
Great, thank you. And Councilwoman Sorrow, I'm assuming you accept that as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, I have Councilwomen Dejas.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the comments from my colleagues. I think all the comments were very, very important. I, for one, am very happy that, as a city, we now have control of our beloved Queen Mary. The Queen Mary is such an integral part of our city's identity, and it is of great value to many of our lifelong residents to perhaps were able to take pictures of their quinceañeras, their graduations, their proms, you know, with the Queen Mary in the background, or maybe they even had their events there, like their weddings. Or like me, I had my prom there at the Queen Mary many years ago, but, you know, it holds a lot of wonderful, wonderful memories. So I'm very thankful that we have it and that we're going to be able to take care of it. I know that it has a lot of repairs that it needs, and thank you, thank you, John, so much for the detailed and transparent presentation that you gave us. I know that on one of my last visits at the Queen Mary, the elevator broke, and so I had to take an adventure in getting to know the Queen Mary very intimately, where they escorted me out through a very different and very closed-off way. But I know firsthand some of those repairs that need to be taken. So I really appreciate the transparent with the companies that we're using and the, you know, how we're moving forward, where the money is coming from. And I really think it's a great idea to actually look into it further and see if we can be seen as a national monument, because anywhere we go, Long Beach or the Queen Mary represents Long Beach, and so I think that's something that we all need to be very, very proud of. Nobody is going to be able to take care of the Queen Mary as much as we can now that we have it back in our hands and now we have the ability to do so. So I'm really looking forward to being able to support the motion on the floor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Supernow.
Thank you. I stand in support of tonight's item, but I just had a couple of questions because I think I heard it the wrong way, that I clarified before July. And I can ask all the questions, and then John Kaiser can answer them all at once if he'd like. So I think I heard that the lifeboats were to be removed, but then not to be removed. So if you could explain that, is that just before July? Another point was, I think Elliott Bay Design Group was referred to as a contractor. Technically, they're a subcontractor to Moffett and Nickel. And so my question would be, would they come back? What's the likelihood of them coming back for a re-inspection or a more robust inspection before we get underway? And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Supernow, yes, certainly. So short answer to the lifeboat question is we'd like to get them down over the next six months. So we would start the design process, planning, you know, how we would do that logistically immediately, and then over the next couple of months, we'd remove them and begin the restoration of the two that are originals. To the second question about subcontracting, yes. Elliott Bay Design Group has some specific expertise with regard to these historic vessels that Moffett and Nickel subcontract for. They serve as an expert witness, but they also do engineering work, design, and investigation modeling. Flood modeling is a really important thing they do, and so they would be coming back as part of this agreement under Moffett and Nickel as a subcontractor, simply because they have some very, very specific expertise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes council, well, actually, Councilwoman Allen. I'm going to make some comments as well, but Councilwoman Allen, just some additional comments?
No, I do not. That was, my question was answered.
Okay, great. Let me make some comments, and then I think we may have a public comment, and then we'll go to the vote. Well, first, I just want to, first, I actually, I think, you know, everyone has, I think, had really good comments, so I agree with what everyone has said, certainly all our colleagues on the council. This is a very, I think, unique opportunity for the city to really have this chance to have not just the ownership of the ship, but have no lease in place that is really, you know, causing challenges for our ability to fully control kind of the future of the ship in front of us. And so I think Mr. Modica mentioned, it's been over 40 years, and here we are for the first time in many decades, where we have this very unique opportunity. I want to also just note, and I think, I mean, I've said this publicly many times, preservation has to be at the center of what we do moving forward. Councilwoman Price mentioned this as a national monument. I think that's fantastic. I believe currently, the Queen Mary, it is, of course, a historic icon. We made a commitment to take care of and to preserve this piece of history. And I think, I believe the designation of the Queen Mary is similar to the designation of the Statue of Liberty has as a historical place. Is that right, Mr. Kaiser?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it's a National Historic Register for Historic Hotels, so I will confirm that in our report back to the council.
Yeah, I thought there was a similar other type of designation as well, but yeah, let us know in the report back. I'd be curious. I've heard that from a lot of residents that have approached me about the topic. And I think, obviously, preservation is really important as we move forward. I want to add something, and I think Councilmember Supernow, I know will agree with me on this. One thing that I'm really hoping that when we get back to the public discussion at the council is the importance of having an actual public foundation for any major project. Being involved in the community hospital work and really just saving of that amazing resource for the community, the council member will tell you that the foundation was just an important part, not just of community support, but also, of course, of funding important projects. And so I know that there have been attempts in the past on kind of structuring a foundation board for the Queen Mary. I just want to make sure that the council and I receive a little bit of a historical perspective of what have foundations worked. I know there have been numerous groups that, some that have had foundations or wanted to start foundations. I believe that there was a foundation in place recently that was just getting off the ground, but forming a community foundation that can be a source of fundraising, of support, of oversight, I think is going to be important in the short and long term. And so there's no need to, you know, to get into that tonight, but I would like to see Mr. Modica and Mr. Kaiser, when we come back, just a fuller discussion about what the foundation could look like in the future and those that have shown interest. They've also received interest from folks that want to be involved or have been involved in the past. Is that possible?
Absolutely, yes. You're right. There have been some foundations in the past, some of which were not very successful, and there's one underway right now that we believe will be very successful, and we can certainly give you an update on that, as well as how for people to get engaged and involved. That's a great addition to our report back in July.
Okay, thank you. And then in addition to that, I think I'm very supportive of the critical repairs, so I'm really glad that that's where the focus is. That is obviously really, really important, and I'm just, to all of you, just thankful that we got on this really quick. I just also, more broadly speaking, I think it's important to kind of sit back and also just thank folks that have been involved. The truth is, is that, and I told this to our city auditor over the weekend, I just also want to publicly thank our city auditor, Laura Dowd, who has been on, she's around the Queen Mary now for many years, and it's, a lot of her audit work is also what led us to this point. And so I just want to publicly thank her for her kind of continuous oversight of the Queen Mary and her oversight of the future as well. It has made and will make what happens in the future better, and so I just want to publicly thank her for her work on that. And so with that, I look forward to the, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Just wanted to also just convey, I know that just earlier today and yesterday, the port leadership has conveyed to me and to, I know, conveyed it to the city manager as well, that they view what happened with the city having the lease as a very positive development, and their conversations with the city as far as all of Pier H. And so I know that when the study session comes back to us sounding like Mr. City Manager in July, we'll be able to have a robust conversation about kind of where things are at with that port analysis on Pier H as well. So I think we all look forward to those discussions. And I do agree that what Councilwoman Price and others talked about, the partnership, you know, whoever that partner ends up being, is critical as we move forward, and that's, I think, what we're all moving towards right now. So thank you all for that and for all the leadership. So, thank you all for that and for all the leadership on behalf of staff as well. And with that, I think there may be one public comment, and then we'll go ahead and go to a roll call vote.
Ann Cantrell?
Yes, this is Ann Cantrell. And I appreciate this report, and I appreciate the city attempting to hold on to the Queen Mary. I think it's known around the world as the icon of Long Beach. I do have some questions about why we are making a contract with Evolution Hospitality, which I understand is a hotel business, when, as I understood it, there's going to be no one allowed on the Queen Mary except workers for six months, or at least six months, while the repairs are being done. And it sounded like we are promising to pay Evolution Hospitality $2 million, and I'm wondering what for? It sounds like Moffett and Nichols, Public Works, city staff will be working on this. What will Evolution Hospitality be doing? Can somebody answer my question? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for the item.
Thank you. And I think, Mr. Kaiser, I think you had a slide that kind of listed some of the work that would happen. Do you want to just briefly, again, just kind of review some of the work that Evolution would be doing?
Yeah, absolutely. So, they're actually on staff while the ship is closed over the past year. In fact, there's an entire security team. So, not just on the perimeter of the ship, but there has not been one break-in in the ship over the period of this last year. Remember, we're also protecting the historic assets. There's many, many historic assets on the ship, so that security is important and involves a whole team rotating 24/7. It also covers all of our engineering team and maintenance team. And so, firing up those systems, even replacing, you know, belts and light bulbs and turning things on and making sure that things are working. There's mechanical systems, plumbing, electrical, warning systems, fire systems. All that stuff has to be run and managed on a day-to-day basis. And then, of course, there's basic custodial and other work that happens, and that's pretty extensive. And so, we have landscapers, we have painting. All that is happening, even though the ship is closed, they're working every single day and making sure that that large facility is taken care of. So, we also have huge electricity and power bills. Believe it or not, there's a million square feet out there and powering it and making sure that all our hookup fees, the technology, the power, anything that you have in your home, multiply that by about 1,000, and those bills have to be paid as well. So, I can get into further detail in a report to the council if you like, but I was pretty impressed. It's pretty extensive. And ultimately, Evolution is doing all that while the ship is closed.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. And I'll add one last thing to that. And I know that Evolution is also ensuring that John Thomas is retained as kind of a historical preservation officer during this time. And he has, of course, in the past. And there's probably nobody in the city or very few people that know more about the Queen Mary than John Thomas does. And certainly, his love for the ship, I think, is well-known across the city. So, I know that Evolution is also, I believe, has John as part of their team to kind of oversee some of that preservation work. And so, with that, thank you very much. Go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Zendehas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Price?
Aye.
Councilman Supernau?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mungo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Uranga?
Aye.
Councilman Austin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. I think that concludes the agenda. I don't see anyone sign up for any new business or announcements. So, with that, I will go ahead and close the meeting, and we'll adjourn until the next one. Thank you very much, everyone.
Oh, man. How come he doesn't?